What is Larry like? He likes some of them.
Oh, he's a Bruno Mars. Not only a fan, but he follows Bruno Mars. He'll go on tour with him. He wears his pink Bruno.
Yeah. Let's get something else. Basically. I drove by.
Ready? Okay. All right. I'll call to order the Board of Commissioners and other Providence Township Meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we'll begin with the roll call.
Dave Grady, township manager.
Robert Scott, solicitor.
Max Cooper, Ward one commissioner.
Matt Garson, Ward two commissioner.
Kate McKenzie, fourth ward.
Mike Anapp, third ward.
Shannon Barnes, fifth ward.
Good evening, folks. It's Robert O'Connor from the sixth ward.
Marty Malloy, Ward seven.
All right, thanks. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Uh, we will have executive session after the meeting tonight. Um, I don't think we have any appointments to boards and commissions, right, Dave? Okay. Uh, nothing for tonight. Uh, public comment, are you guys all here for the two oh nine Hastings? Okay. Um, so let's actually move that up so that you guys don't have to stick around. So we're gonna fast forward to, um, item two C under the Building and Zoning Committee Report, which is the two oh nine Hastings subdivision. Um, do you guys wanna come on up and state who you are and we can discuss?
I'm Philip Neal, um, with Catania Engineering. We did the design plans.
Dave, what do we need to do tonight on this?
So before us, they have a two lot subdivision. Uh, this is a residentially zoned area. Applicant is proposing to subdivide two oh nine Hastings Avenue, located in the R four zoning district into two residential parcels, with one lot remaining, uh, maintaining existing residents, um, and Lot two fronting on Beach Road. Um, the plan, uh, includes the, uh, proposed improvements consist of a nine hundred ten square foot driveway to service Lot one, the removal of a pool, and a four hundred and eighteen square foot garage on Lot two. Um, plan has been reviewed by the, um, Lynn Architects, who was serving as the, uh, alternate engineer for this project. Um, since Phil works for Catania Engineering, would have been a conflict there having Catania review it. Uh, so Lynn Architects Office has reviewed it. The Delaware County Planning Commission has reviewed it. Uh, the Township's Planning Commission, um, and the Shade Tree Commission have, uh, reviewed it. Um, each of the, uh, mentioned organizations had comments. Um, and Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe all of the comments have been addressed. Does that, you agree with that, Phil?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, one of the items that is still, um, uh, in, uh, of her board discussion is the, uh, sidewalk. Um, the salad over requires that sidewalks be installed or that a payment in lieu of, uh, be made.
Is it's my understanding that, um, the applicant is willing to do the payment in lieu of installing a sidewalk?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, and that estimate would be determined by, uh, Lynn Architects Office. I don't believe that estimate has been determined yet.
I don't think we've seen that yet.
Okay. Um, but that, that would be determined and, um, agreed upon with the applicant.
Oh.
Um. Maureen, am I, have I covered everything? Just anything? Okay.
I'm not super familiar with that area. Who's ward is that?
And it's Shannon's ward. I am super familiar with that area, though.
Do you think it makes sense to do even in?
I, I do, but I just wanted to make sure I have the right house. There's a sidewalk already there. It'd be just a sidewalk down towards the, towards Chester, right?
Correct, yes. So the sidewalk along Hastings and then the, the side street that is a corner lot does not have.
So it's just that one.
Yeah, and because the uniform of the nature and there's no sidewalks there, that's kind of why we're doing in lieu of putting the sidewalk in.
Okay. Uh, that sounds fine to me. We're always happy to take funds and reallocate it to the places where we're really in need of sidewalks, so. That. Anyone else have anything? Okay. Do we need to vote on that, Dave?
Yes.
Um, so I will make a motion that we accept a payment in lieu of a sidewalk, um, with respect to the two oh nine Hastings subdivision.
And you're also trying to approve the subplan.
Okay. And to approve the subdivision plan? Is that what we should call it? Okay.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just out of curiosity, maybe we don't know it right now. How much is the fee that we'll receive?
We don't know that at the moment. That'll be.
The linear foot, you know, based on the estimated cost of sidewalk, how many feet are there?
Okay.
And that would be the linear foot along Beach, I'm presuming, then? Right.
And that, that payment will go into the township's sidewalk fund.
All right, um, any further comments or questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Then we thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll try to make it harder on you next time. Just kidding.
All right, so. Uh, Bob, do you have anything to add in this solicitor's report that's not already on the agenda?
Uh, I do not.
Um, Charles, anything to add that's not on the agenda?
Dr. Spurts on, uh, detail that there's only new payments at the border.
Oh, good.
My intention.
Sounds great, yeah, thank you. Um, okay, so we, I unfortunately need to, um, scoot out here at eight thirty, so we sort of reworked some of the, um, committee's order so that we could do the Pico tree work together because, you know, Max is gonna sort of introduce it, but there's a lot of things in the second section that address that, and we'll be able to get through that, uh, before Matt takes over. So we're gonna go to Government Relations Report with Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, President McKenzie. Uh, like you said, I'll just introduce the topic. I know a lot of you have been doing work behind the scenes on it. Uh, so item one A on our agenda, Pico tree work. So as noted in previous meetings, there are four upcoming Pico projects in the area. The South Media Moylan area, Capple's Lane, Partridge Drive, um, and a fourth one at Pico hasn't yet announced. Uh, we're waiting on dates from Pico for rescheduling a meadow, sorry, a meeting between Pico, uh, the township and our state elected officials. Uh, Pico has assured us that they won't be doing any work until, uh, that meeting takes place. Uh, the township plans to express its concerns, as we've all discussed, uh, particularly around tree removals and new poles in the South Media Moylan, uh, and Capple's area. Um, and now I'm happily turn it back over to you, President McKenzie, or Mike Anapp, or whoever would like to speak on it more.
Sure, I'll just note, so the Parkerage project's a little bit different, um, and that's actually in my backyard. And there's, there are line issues there. We actually do have a reliability issue, um, as opposed to the Moylan and Capple's area where it's not necessarily, necessarily a lot, a reliability issue for that area. Um, so Dave and I had a good call with Pico today about what's going on in Parkerage. Um, they're going to sort of redo the lines so that the high voltage lines are separated from the low voltage, so we don't get these major power surges like we've been getting. So I'm gonna send out a note to my ward on that. Um, it's not, you know, happy to give people more details if you want, but I think we're gonna be able to separate that out because it doesn't need to go through the same process. There's not the same concerns as there are for the other two. And then the other two, I think we'll get into more detail below. Unless anyone else has anything right now?
No, discuss it.
Okay.
Below.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the second item on my agenda, one B. Uh, so this is, uh, an item that we've been discussing now and that Matt and I have been having meetings on for the last several months. Uh, so the comprehensive plan, uh, the next, uh, kind of stage of this, uh, comprehensive plan development, are organizing a series of stakeholder interviews. Um, and so what we've been asking, uh, you to do, and we ask you to kind of, uh, start to finalize candidates, uh, that you'd like to put forward for this. Uh, identify someone who, uh, would be able to represent your ward and assist in facilitating these informational interviews. Uh, ideally, this person should be, you know, capable of kind of, uh, collecting feedback, um, in kind of a level-headed manner and not necessarily injecting their own opinions, but, uh, kind of facilitating a conversation, documenting that and, uh, passing that information on, uh, to our comprehensive plan working group as we, uh, build language, uh, describing how we'd like our town to develop. Um, and the timeline for this, we want to have finalized candidates. Is it by the next board meeting? Is that what we had discussed? Okay. And we don't have a specific process on how we kind of nominate them or we're nominating them as a slate? Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we had, um, officially determined that, but I think what we talked about with the con plan meeting was each person would nominate somebody. Um, you could probably give that to me ahead of time, and then I can have that prepared at the meeting. And then at the next meeting, those names can be read off and, uh, officially, um, approved, if that's what the board decides to do. Um, I think we were aiming for the September twenty-second meeting, if I recall, um, so that we could start doing the interviews probably beginning in October and November, because it will take some time with all the stakeholders.
Yeah, that's the timeline that I recall as well. Thanks for clarifying, Dave. Uh, so think about who amongst, uh, your neighbors you'd like to, uh, help facilitate these interviews and definitely reach out and be prepared to nominate them, uh, as a slate, uh, in two weeks. And that's all that I have for government relations. Back to you, President McKenzie.
All right, thank you. And we will move on to Building and Zoning with Commissioner Malloy.
And the, uh, first item on my agenda is the fencing regulations. We've been talking about this quite a bit. Um, Maureen, I believe you and Rich have been, uh, reviewing and proposing, uh, new changes. Uh, were those changes updated in our packets? I just wanted to make sure that the one I read was the latest version. Great. So I would imagine that we are at the point of advertising then, uh, for making a motion to advertise for this proposed?
So the, the next step, uh, because this is technically a zoning matter, is that the planning commission would need to review this. Um, so it would be to share, to, um, ask the planning commission to review it. Uh, after the planning commission has reviewed it, then it can come back to the board and be considered for, um, ordinance in substance.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Was there, uh, was there anything, Maureen, that you wanted to call out in terms of revised wording, uh, that you wanted to make sure that we were mostly aware of? Is it section three mostly? So I'll just, uh, for the record, read that out. Fences and walls must have the finished side facing out towards the adjacent property or right-of-way. Support posts and support rails shall face inward toward the center of the property. Welded wire fencing, when installed with a post and rail fence or split rail fencing, shall be on the inside of the fence post and shall face inward towards the center of the property. That's excellent and extremely clear, and I think it meets President McKenzie's desire for clarity. Uh, so I, I don't think I need to make a motion to have it go to the zoning or to the planning commission, do I?
I think you should.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion that we, uh, the board, uh, send this, um, regulations update to our planning commission for their review and comments. Can I get a second? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Great. I'm sorry?
Who's the county?
Oh, just pointing out, it goes both county and township planning.
Thank you. Um, second item on my agenda is an escrow release for, uh, the number eighteen for the media walk Parkway, uh, media walk development. Lord. Um, I have that up here. And. Oh, thank you. So, uh, I will make a motion, uh, as this has already been reviewed, uh, by the important parties, that we release, uh, thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety dollars and forty-eight cents, uh, to progressive new homes as the eighteenth escrow release for the media walk property, project. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries seven to zero. Next on my agenda, uh, we just talked about the Hastings subdivision, uh, so we'll move on from there. The next item are solar panels and the ground arrays. We have, uh, talked about this in a couple of meetings as well. Um, in our packets last time and this time, we've, uh, all had a chance hopefully to review the, uh, example from Swathmore Borough, um, for what they've done with their ordinance, uh, on ground arrays for solar panels. Uh, I think it looks fantastic. Um, it is up on our screen right now. Um, obviously, as a starting point, I think this is extremely good, and I'd like to, uh, have us move towards, you know, making it very similar, uh, to, uh, what Smothmore Borough has. So. In. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, so I just was thinking about the action item, so should we? Bobby, what should we be doing here? Have you looked at this and?
Sorry, have I?
Yeah, you have the, the ground array.
Yeah, the next step, similarly, I believe it's, it's before the, it's on the planning commission agenda for this coming month. Um, it is, um, so that, that's the next step.
Great.
So if you're interested in similar motion to work.
I am very interested.
This would also fall under the zoning code.
Yes, so same thing we did with the, the fence.
So I'll move that we, uh, ask our planning commission to, working off of a similar language with the Swathmore Borough ordinance, to draft an ordinance for our review. Can I get a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries seven to zero. My next three items, I'm not, we, I, we've talked about all of them, uh, for several meetings, uh, quite a bit, but I am going to follow our amazing township manager's advice and let Solicitor Scott weigh in on the small wireless facilities design standards, the public right-of-way access ordinance consideration, and then eventually shade tree regulations. Solicitor Scott?
Okay, so, um, first one, wire, small wireless facilities. Uh, you may recall, a statewide statute was enacted a couple of years ago that, um, uh, allows for small wireless facilities by right, um, subject to certain conditions and standards. Um, and one of the things in that statute, it, it authorizes municipalities to establish design standards for them. Now, in a built-out community like this, where there are utility poles, generally, these small wireless facilities get placed on existing utility poles. But if you have a neighborhood that doesn't have utility poles, that has underground utilities, uh, you could, one morning, people could wake up and find this, you know, a, a self-carriers out there putting a pole up in their front lawn. Um, and be- because of that, this law allows municipalities to set design standards for those poles. Um, does, coming up with design standards for you, for small cellular facilities is, is not particularly, um, uh, it, it's not a rich area of options. They're poles. Uh, we have found some design standards, which, uh, hopefully in your packets, um, and, uh, suggest it's a starting point. I, I don't know that there's a whole lot more that can be added to it. I mean, uh, but this is, we thought worth, was better than nothing.
And so the, would the, the purpose of doing this generally, um, for the township would be to protect against poles in an area where they have underground?
There's still could, well, there's, the, that's a different issue. Um, this is where, um, uh, this is in the event that a utility, a cell tower did want to put up a new standalone pole, which they do have the right to do under this, this law, if they, uh, you know, comply with all the other standards of it. If there are existing areas that have underground utilities, we could also separately establish an underground district. And in those districts, they would not be able to put the new poles up. But in discussions with the manager, it's my understanding, it's a very small universe of properties that have underground utilities now.
Yeah.
And I think nothing existing of more than maybe four or five, you, you know, I, I might be wrong, but it seems like it's a, a few little streets that would qualify. Um, it still may be worth doing. I just don't want to get expectations up that this is gonna be, you know, a, a widespread benefit.
What sections of the town, uh, are we referring to? Do you have a, a list or a map?
Some of the, the newer areas are underground. Um, you know, I'm thinking Strathmore Court. Um, some of the areas in the fourth ward, looking at you, Bill, your, your neighborhood is, uh, underground, right? Are you above? Just, okay. Yeah. There, there aren't a lot, there are some areas, but it's not, not large e- expansive areas, and I don't know how small an underground designated, uh.
We would have to.
I don't know, I don't remember what the term was, but.
Yeah.
I don't know how big or small it can be.
Well, we would have to specifically designate areas, not just any, it would have, you know, we'd have to identify specific tracks, not just say anything that now has underground, is now an underground district. You know, we need to.
So I think.
To kind of isolate them and, uh, so, and get, get a list together.
The only, uh, people looking at the sign, the only one that really jumped out is stir. And if only one, not areas, you know, or what, I would want to make sure that historic home use, or at least, I, I, I like, fact, it all has, that everything possible must compile with historic. And that, that's me for, Leaper House.
And, 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 yeah, it's a little easier in Lansdowne because there is at least one neighborhood with historic light fixtures. And, you know, there you've got an easy kind of template for what, hey, you gotta make it look like that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Right.
I just want to have, I mean, maybe there's some.
Yeah, I mean, the corner of Providence and Brookhaven, there's some historic buildings at that intersection. Yeah, I, I mean, I have no other thoughts. I mean, I think other, you know, new developments are probably in a similar area. I think of South Media as probably an area where all the power lines are gonna be buried, given, uh, new developments that are happening there.
So I think if there's an interest in establishing underground districts, we need to assemble, um, a list of properties. So if you can all kind of be sensitive in your own wards as to what might qualify, and you could shoot me and/or Dave an email, and could we maybe have the code officer kind of be thinking of this without driving around and to assemble a list and do this with one ordinance or set, set up a district and these, that design standards.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure there's enough for districts, but I, you know, the houses themselves, I don't know if that can just be handled by Rich or someone from the township, so. I think there's also concern that, you know, with some of these Pico projects that are coming in with the higher poles, um, the higher poles would be more attractive to these, um, small wireless facilities. Um, and that might be something that could catch the attention of a utility company, a wireless carrier. Um, so I think that's another part of the reason, uh, this was brought up. There's not a lot of precedent, at least it appears in our research in Delaware County. Um, we found, we found one from Lansdowne. I know Concord Township is currently working on one. Uh, Havford Township has something, but it's not, it's not very extensive. Um, Lansdowne seems to be the most extensive one, um, to work off of. So.
Kind of interesting because, so we just talked about having maybe some kind of underground district in areas where everything's underground, but a lot of the township, the poles are in the backyard. If, you know, if I'm in a neighborhood, pull in the backyard, I don't want to now have a pole in the front yard, right? Aesthetically, probably, if you have to have a pole, it might be better to have it in the backyard. So would that was on another district, or would we be able to tailor it to say, you have to put it, you have to put the what, the facility in the backyard where the existing pole are.
Yeah, existing, right?
Um, I believe you can make them go on the existing in that instance, but yeah.
Because a lot of, lot of township, um, has a fear.
Well, I mean, we should keep talking about this because I, I am, I am all about sort of maintaining resident expectations, and I think, you know, these are good things that residents probably don't necessarily expect. But how is this, I mean, can we actually prevent Pico from putting them on top of taller poles? Is that, is that something that is like suggested here?
Well, I mean, you know, I, I personally think it's better to have these things go on top of an existing pole and go higher than it is to have new ones put in the ground.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't see that as, I, I know there was some talk from some members of the public about a dislike for these high poles, but where the utilities have the power, I, and I, uh, I think that, uh, having few poles that are tall is better than having new ones added, so.
Yeah, let's all, let's keep looking at this. I think my general concern with some of these Pico discussions that were raised by the members of the public is I really want to have a good relationship with Pico such that we understand when projects are being suggested and understand what they entail and then have the ability to, you know, have an open discussion with Pico about how they might affect residents, um, rather than try to throw some things in their way that are, you know, maybe just gonna create some bad blood that they're going to be able to sort of navigate around anyway. So I, I just want to make sure we're doing something that makes sense for the whole township with respect to these poles. Um, and then also, it's not sort of something that's going to actually make the situation worse with respect to communication with Pico, but let's all take a look and see what we think.
On, on this one, on the five G, I think Pico's really not at, at issue. I, I, I think it's a very little interest or, uh, you know, concern to Pico.
So then we should be looking at it with respect to just.
Yeah.
General resident expectations.
But the next items on the agenda are, to your point, so.
And, and just to make sure everyone understands, we, the township's not permitted to prevent the small wireless facilities from going on poles. Our only ability is to regulate the design of them and, and somewhat the appearance. So we, we can't stop it altogether.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think a resident would have an expectation that if the pole's already in the backyard, if something wireless had to go in, it would be attached there. Um, a little trickier if there's no pole at all in the area. Um, and then if there's a pole in front, there's a chance something could get attached in the front. All right. And we gotta keep.
Bless you.
So, uh, the second item is, uh, the draft of the utility right-of-way ordinance. Again, Solicitor Scott, if you want to call this out, you know.
Yes, sure. So the F and J are related. They both arise out of, uh, our meetings with a lawyer who's been hired by residents of Moylan about Pico. And, uh, he has made suggestions that he believes would give the township and residents more leverage against Pico. Um, one is to, right now, the township has a, uh, an ordinance that requires a permit if you're opening a street. If you are, if you're excavating in the street, you need to get a permit. Uh, he is proposing that the township, uh, amend or expand that, so you need a permit for any work in the right-of-way, whether it's in the street or not. Uh, and then related in that it's about Pico more than it is, is he's recommending an amendment to the shade tree ordinance, which would, right now, uh, somebody who has denied a permit has a right to appeal. Uh, he is requesting that it be amended to allow someone to appeal the grant of a permit. So that if Pico were issued a permit allowing them to take down trees, uh, an aggrieved party could, uh, file an appeal. So if, uh, yeah, we're, the prior meetings, we discussed subjecting utilities to the shade tree commis- trade tree ordinance and the requirement that they get a permit for tree removal. Um, and the suggestion is if you allow, uh, an appeal from the grant of a permit, that homeowner who's, uh, Pico wants to take down their tree, they could appeal.
So with respect to work in the right-of-way, that's sort of why there is a right-of-way, right? So that they can do those things and maintain the public utility. So are those, how would that sort of go? Then would the township be a party to that at all?
Well, they need to apply to the township. Um, and it's, there, an ordinance of this nature is not unheard of. I'm aware of them elsewhere. Um, and there is, you know, there's potential coordination of other utilities and sidewalks and, uh, sewer facilities in the right-of-way. Um, there is, so there is, you know, the, I, I don't think it's a, um, I don't think it's frivolous suggestion. I think that there is a township interest in making sure work in the right-of-way doesn't, you know, it doesn't, the sewer work doesn't interfere with the electric lines and vice versa.
So would they, would the permit require a fee? Or are we allowed, are we allowed to charge them a fee?
Yeah.
All right.
But the fee would have to be related to the cost. It's not, it's gonna be minimal. It's not, and it means it's gonna be, uh, um, a, a nat on a Pico, you know?
It's a, it's a speed bump.
Yeah.
It's a communication speed bump.
Yeah.
And if Pico had balled through on what they promised Dave in the years. And if Pico had followed through on what they promised Dave in the years ago, they would have already been doing this and they wouldn't need this. But this, I think, protects us and our residents to let us know that what they're doing and creates that communication speed bump. And we make the fee absolutely as minimal as possible. Uh, so that we can just make sure that things are coordinated from a communication standpoint. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's not to punish, it's just to make sure that we're coordinated and we're thoughtful. So I would, I would recommend, you know, and I think we need to talk through this a little bit more because there's a lot of even, even in my voice, some feelings around some of this, so.
Yeah, as long as it fosters communication, it's sort of not, not the opposite.
I don't want, I agree with Kate. I don't think we want to make, maintain actually improved and strong relationships with Pico. We need Pico. I love the fact that I have lights in here right now, but it's just an everything, right? Thank God. But uh, but I do really just, they aren't willing right now to commit to communication and that's the biggest thing.
Well, I don't, you know, so Dave and I had that call today with a public relations person and three engineers, and they were actually really helpful. They followed up with an email in what, an hour? I mean, so I understand everyone has different sort of interactions with them, but I just want to make sure that we're not being extremely difficult such that we make things worse.
Totally agree, but they did that after a, a lot of hubbub was made. And so I'd like to see them do that ahead of time. To quote, that's, but I think more discussions, that's all. I would, I would say let's not take any action now unless you feel Solicitor Scott that we need to.
No, I mean, I, I, I understand the need to mull it over, like, you know, um.
What happened if the permit denied?
We would have to deny it for, um, well, everything is appealable. Uh, it would, it would if it were done at the staff level.
According, according to the draft ordinance, if it was denied, the appeal would be before the Board of Commissioners.
And then subsequently to the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay. So if the board is okay with just kind of punting on this one a little bit, then so we can keep mulling these two ordinances over? Okay, uh, then the last item on my agenda is just um, making sure the public is aware of the zoning hearing board of Nether Providence. We'll conduct a public hearing um, September nineteenth, which is a Monday, seven thirty here uh at the municipal building. There are one, two, three, four, there are four uh items on the docket uh ranging number twenty-two, thirteen through twenty-two sixteen. And it'll be around uh one nineteen Westminster Drive, ten twelve Beach Road, three twenty-two North Providence Road, and three twenty-one Island Avenue. And folks who have, are interested in any of those uh projects are welcome to come and attend. Uh, and that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you. I think we're on to finance administration. Um, so David sent out a note earlier about our twenty twenty-three MMOs, and I unfortunately thought it was our state aid, which is, state aid is good when it goes up. MMOs are not good when they go up. I read the email too fast. Um, so due to, as you recall, I think um, in our audit, we, there was sort of a, a thought that we were calculating, um, I guess it was, was the MMO based on, I don't know, Dave, maybe you can fill in the ins and outs, but we had to adjust our calculation, even though we thought it was correct and so did our actuary. Um, we agreed to make the change. Um, and so as a result of that, it sounds, seems like as a result of that directly, our MMO has gone up by sixty-five thousand for the police pension plan uh, this year, which is unfortunate. Um, but you know, something that we'll have to deal with. And then the non-uniform plan went up by twelve hundred. Um, and those are the minimum municipal contribution that we need to make into each of those pension plans for twenty twenty-three. Um, so the resolutions are in the packet. Uh, I think Dave has them up there, so I will make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen where the township of Nether Providence has calculated its twenty twenty-three minimum municipal obligation. Um, in consultation with our actuary, Mock and Hoppe Benefits Group, and in compliance with the Commonwealth Pennsylvania um, mun- municipal pension plan funding standard and recovery act in the amount of seven hundred thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, these are broken out by police pension plan, five hundred and thirty-three thousand and seventeen dollars, and the non-uniform pension plan in the amount of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries seven zero. Um, and then the second item on my agenda is the healthcare trust, uh, renew of our, our police healthcare. Um, so when we were looking at our initial draft of the budget, we sort of start with last year's budget and then um, adjust any inputs that we're expecting. And it's just about this time of the year that we start to get the actual amounts. Um, so Dave was concerned that a lot of our insurance costs were going to go up, but uh pleasant surprise, our police healthcare costs are not going to go up. Um, and so you can see in the note here, um, we will get, actually get a two-month premium holiday, and if we are willing to sign a one-year extension before September thirtieth, um, you know, this, it's, it's a pretty good deal and it's, it was surprisingly um, good news. So Dave recommends moving to accept the extension and I would as well. Um, so I will make a motion to accept a one-year renewal of the police healthcare uh, with the Delaware County Public Schools Healthcare Trust brokered through Arthur J. Gouder and Company. Uh, any comments or question? Uh, yes. Uh, all of you, all of you vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? That motion carries seven zero, and we are up to Commissioner Barnes with Community Health and Environment.
Okay, sorry, just the one addition was.
Oh, oh, the one addition, yes. Um, so we have a late addition, so we need to make a motion to approve it, to add it to the agenda, and then we'll discuss it. Um, so I will make a motion to add to our agenda for tonight, um, a motion to approve ordinance eight forty-one with respect to delinquent tax claims. Any comments or questions? All in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries seven zero, so now we're able to.
Just what, just one second, the, the Sunshine Act amendments that require this, require that you state the reason it's being added to the.
So I believe this was a, this was an ordinance that was advertised and it was um.
And it was inadvertently left off.
It was inadvertently.
Yeah, it has been properly advertised, just through my fault, oversight, I forgot to include it on the agenda. I realized it today after the agenda had been posted. Um, so that was the, the reason for its inclusion now.
And tomorrow, the township will need to post a copy of the amended agenda here and on the website. So that's the the impact of this new law. So it's one of the talk that.
Okay, um, so the, the last item is um Portnoy, we needed to amend the Delinquent Tax Claims Act or uh ordinance um with respect to, it was new state law, is that right?
Uh, federal credit, um, fair, fair debt collections, um, stuff, they're changing their collection method in response to that and changing their fee structure as a result.
Okay, so as a result of a federal law change, we needed to change our ordinance with our tax, our delinquent tax claims collector. Um, so that was discussed extensively. Um, we made, we made a motion to advertise, it's been advertised, and now we're ready to approve it. Um, so I will make a motion to approve or ordinance eight forty-one with respect to delinquent tax claims amendment. Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. And now we are actually on to Community Health and Environment with Krishna Barnes.
Thank you, President McKenzie. First, we have the recycling program out for bid. The uh twenty twenty-three recycling program is out. Bids are due on September fourteenth. We've had four interested contractors attend the pre-bid meeting last week and no action here is needed. The Waste Committee, uh, as Marty noted last meeting, the Waste Committee is being formed. These, we must identify a representative from our wards to serve on the committee, on the committee. There'll be eleven members, one member who must be a current resident nominated from each ward. Uh, they have to be over the age of sixteen, two currently elected commissioners, one person from the EAC and Bill Silverstein has already been chosen to represent that. And one member representing the interests of the school district.
And uh, two possible, uh, one see, much like our comprehensive plan, which we have nominations for.
I'm also happy to help.
So uh, so please if you could bring uh, and send the, and the meetings compile and spell both on uh here with this minute and any.
Right now, too, I'd be very interested in seeing if this would be a much more impactful uh, committee. We have someone representing the school district.
Just the follow-up question for you. The number one question I'm asked when I ask my residents to participate is what's the time requirement? So is this like a monthly meeting, a twice monthly meeting? Like, what are you envisioning for?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a monthly meeting um with research in between. Uh, the EAC has agreed to step up and take the lead on research, but I would imagine committee members will also uh, have potentially a subcommittee uh of the committee work, working together in smaller groups. So they can anticipate one meeting a month with some potential subcommittee commitments as well. Uh, and thanks to the EAC for stepping up and being willing to do some research and doing some digging.
Great.
Okay, we have a single-use plastics ban discussion. The EAC has recommended that the board consider adopting a single-use plastics ban similar to media burrows. Media's ban will become effective in January twenty twenty-three. There haven't been any known issues with media's ban to date, and it can be viewed online.
Bob, do you have? So I, I think before when we'd had this discussion, I was concerned about sort of being the guinea pig on it and not having a good communication line with Acme. Um, and now it seems like media's taken that over, which is nice. And so we can maybe ride them, their, their coattails, but is it, have you encountered anything? Have you had to discuss anything, anything that you can share with us? I know.
Well, media is, the, the ordinance has been enacted, but it does not go into effect until year end, and they're not going to issue any citations for six months after that. So right now it's in an education phase, and when it goes into effect, like the, the first thing you're required to do is post, you know, signs saying no plastic bags or whatnot. Um, and so there, and while they've had, the Media Business Association Authority has had meetings with businesses, there haven't, there hasn't been any, you know, um, there hasn't been the need to take any enforcement action yet, so.
Okay. But there hasn't been, so it, it sounds like things have generally been going well. There've been good meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, there's not.
Yeah.
There hasn't been a big, I mean, you know, there was some grumbling, um, but there has not been, um, you know, uh, angry council meetings filled with people that, so.
Okay.
I'm curious, have they also met with any of the businesses that are technically in Nether Providence but are like functionally part of the media downtown?
I would doubt it.
So I see a hand. A quick update, I just wanted to get a seat for the media DSC meeting or before this one, um, just talk about that. Um, they also mentioned that uh, Upper Providence is the thing to um, we've not been given the ordinance, which is also, you know, letting you see this thing, you know, as close to that as possible, it just makes you know, easier for residents to attend to things in the same.
Uniform.
You know, media or here. Um, the one thing that we were talking about changing is um, you know, potential recognition, we see we need to improve uh, amended reading for uh get the bigger bags. Media did not have that, or it would be one of the discussions, just moving to a different question. You know, a lot of them didn't take out their ones. Um, you know, it means that.
Okay, sorry, they were just um saying that in, in some respect, leaving that fee up to businesses, whether they charge a fee or not, you know, means you'll have differences between businesses and you know, potential confusion. So that was the one thing that their commissioners pulled out of their ordinance, but they are encouraging anyone who copies their ordinance uh, to consider, you know, including a fee. So I asked them to keep us up to date on, you know, what kind of fee they're recommending. If it's not in their ordinance, but it's kind of a gentleman's agreement, you know, that they recommend, you know, something like fifteen cents. Uh, you know, we could consider including that, but that's something that we'll learn more about as they, as they roll that out.
Thanks. I just want to say, I think there's a great value in uniformity. I know uh been hearing people kind of mention that during this conversation, but I think as much as we can kind of have a uniform region where all the businesses are treated the same way, I think there's great value in that for decreasing confusion, especially with a, a new ordinance.
And it looks like this, the media rule applies to single-use plastic shopping bags and plastic straws and plastic stirs. Is that, so those are the three categories? Okay. Okay, no, I think it's, it sounds like a great thing to move towards.
And they're also going to, um, you know, they'll share their educational materials, you know, with, with us and with Upper Providence, and you know, they would love it if you know, that bubble just covers a bigger area.
Mm-hmm. Well, no, I think that was originally my concern is having like media right there and really us, if we were sort of the, the first mover here, just targeting like the pantry one and Acme, I was a little anxious about that. But here it seems, you know, we're moving the other way with media going first, which makes a lot more sense to follow suit.
Um, some of us were having a sidebar and just trying to get clarification. Was there uh any discussion on additional plastic items like plastic cut cups or plastic kind of like takeaway boxes or any other sort of kind of plastic containers involved with food stuff?
One, one thing, uh, uh, the EAC had recommend, recommended that we reach out to uh, the Foundry Church uh food pantry, uh, because they actually use plastic bags and they're heavily dependent on plastic bags. Um, the way Media Borough's ordinance is written, it appears that someplace like that would not be impacted by that. Um, and that would probably be my interpretation of it as well. Um, but that was a strong concern of the uh, the food bank. Um, they wanted to make sure they, they would be exempt from that, so.
Yeah, if they're not selling, but it seems like something we could maybe work with them on to change practice, but not shock them.
Yeah.
Maybe someone could donate the usable bags.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you got so many paper bags too, and they're so hardy, yeah. We could just be mindful about the distribution versus sale uh kind of clarification.
Well, also would impact things like uh food trucks, you know, temporary, um, pick up the uh gentleman used to cook meals at the, at the Rose Valley train station uh and, and donate money, donating the money. Be careful, obviously, we could take a look at the ordinance and make sure we think about the unintended consequences. Really frustrating, the heck hasn't gotten back to us because it's, he is kind of picking on them. And the only other thing I'd say is give them watch review and draft that. I would give them a pretty long runway to implementation. I don't know what the economic costs are to Acme Pantry one, food trucks and some stuff.
No, and we, we discussed that when this came up, what, a year or so ago, and um, maybe it wasn't that long ago, I don't know, but we tried several times to reach out to different people there, no response.
I'm curious, are you familiar with any other regional efforts for kind of similar plastic straws or paper bag ordinance that, you know, we're talking about trying to have kind of a cohesive regional plan? Are there other different regional plans, uh, you know, outside of kind of media, us and Upper Providence that maybe we should consider?
There's, well, I think media copied a lot from Westchester, who I think has successfully implemented this. And there's other, um, I don't think which other ones, there's Hever, Hevertown, I've referred, I'm never going to get that right. It'll be one of, um. Okay. Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Make sure we're not setting up a Jets for Shark situation or what plastic people can use. Make sure we're not setting up a Jets for Shark situation, what plastic people can use.
For EAC to draft something for us to look at and review, so I think that would probably be the next step.
Well, I think we're supposed to be looking at media's, right? And then maybe think about what we need to tailor to.
Oh, yeah, that's why I'm, I mean, rather than, I mean, would it be, just to jumpstart that a little bit, might be for the EAC to, to give one to us that would include, you know, perhaps a fee or some other kind of opportunity there and other things that have pertaining, I think the very small food truck, when, you know, you're trying to do fundraisers for the the fire companies and things like that, that's got a charitable component. I think there's some things that we could do. If they drafted something for us to review, since it's on a model ordinance, then that could help speed this along a little bit.
And all the pool clubs have snack stands and they often, you know, give their kind of stuff away in like little plastic bags.
Yeah.
No plastic bags, no marijuana. So. Top top shit.
No, fine, my God, none, none of this.
Now the problem, no fun, now the problem is.
Just to clarify, it's no marijuana on your school property.
Anywhere there's, right.
Bring us back. Get back, Chris.
Okay. So I can.
Yep.
All right. Most of the EAC updates are already in the agenda. There were, there was talk about becoming a bee and/or a tree that us town, and then we also have two new green advisors from the college that I wanted to welcome. And then we have recycling can purchases. The township is in need of more recycling cans. Each household has a can, but the cans sometimes are taken when homeowners move or the cans can be damaged from wear and tear. Township does its best to repair the cans, but repairing it is not always possible. The company we use before re, re, break Pacific has a minimum purchase order of a hundred and twelve, and it seems that other companies have as well. We're seeking other quotes, but it's recommended the approval of the purchase of recycling cans in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
So the one thing that I talked to Dave about is, I don't know if this is actually the case, but it seems like we're going through a lot of cans. We just purchased these two years ago, over a hundred of them. So I don't know if there's sort of repeat issues, I, you know, I think it's reasonable for, and Dave said we do repair the damaged cans if we can. You know, so something like a new can every five years seems reasonable, but if there are repeat issues, maybe we need to consider building in a fee just so that we're not constantly doing this. And so I just want to maybe think about that. I don't know if it's going to be what the administrative burden is, but I just want to put it out there to start thinking about whether we should be doing something like that. So this doesn't get away from us.
Is, is it possible, though, that with the recycling out to bid, I mean, I know with my waste hauler, a can was provided, that may not be currently part of our bid, but is that something that the expectation is that you would provide cans as part of the pickup of the.
I think we just want to get a recycling company. Yeah.
Cause I don't want to discourage recycling.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I hear you. I think it's, it's a fine line there. I just want to make sure that there's not situations that are, we're sort of providing too many, you know, certain situations, but maybe we're not. Excuse me? Well, that's what I don't know. I'm not sure we really are keeping track of that at all, right?
Run into what?
Repeat offenders.
Oh, I'm, I'm not aware of repeat offenders. Have you, do you recall? Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I don't, I, I don't think there are people who call multiple times, you know, maybe twice, but I, I, and I would imagine in that situation, it could be somebody that's on a very busy state road or something like that where the can keeps getting hit. What's that? Offer no comment on that.
Well, let's leave that if why don't you guys think about it in, in the administration?
One years old, but.
No, that's, that's me too. I've had mine for, yeah, that's, I, I'm surprised that we're going through so many because my can is perfectly fine after like fifteen years. I don't know.
Well, and is there, is there another option? I mean, I know that when I have extra cycling, I have a blue recycling bin that holds almost as much and that gets taken as well. So maybe we don't need to order the cans at this price. Maybe there's another option that's a little bit more affordable, and unfortunately, it's just a different kind of placement.
So, so we, we've been exploring a couple of things. So under the current recycling contract, anything that's identified as recycling or is recycling needs to be taken. So for example, if you had your blue bin out there, that would get picked up. We are, you know, currently the cans are green with the black lids with another Providence logo engraved on them. We've been talking to Rare Rig Pacific. That's the difficult name that to see if there are ways that that minimum could be reduced. If there's oversupply, you know, for example, it doesn't have to be green with the black lid. It could be as simple as just give us a can and we'll slap the sticker on it with another Providence. And, and, and that's why my suggestion had been to authorize the purchase of the cans because of the long lead times. And try to figure out if there is a, a cheaper option, we can reduce the minimum order. Or get some kind of overstock from them or from some other provider in order to do that. Unfortunately, we're down to like literally one or two cans at this point. And it's hard when somebody moves in, the prior owner's taken the can, they don't have anything else. You know, so it's, it's not really the fault of the owner there. You know, we do, of course, want to encourage recycling, so.
No, it seems like something we need to do now, but maybe consider some of this stuff going forward, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're going to explore all options, but we wanted to at least have some, some leeway to, to do something if because we've been working with Rare Rig, we might be able to get it under ten thousand dollars, but right now it's, it's looking like twelve.
All right, so I think we need a motion for that, right?
Right. For just the purchasing.
Yeah, a motion to authorize purchase.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the purchase of recycling cans in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Everyone in favor, say aye. Anyone against? Passes seven to zero, and I did not mess that up. Okay. So finally, there is a DEP nine oh two grant round is open. The twenty twenty two Department of Environmental Protections nine oh two grant round is open until October twenty eighth. The grant can be used for a variety of recycling related purposes, implementing a recycling program, which would include yard waste and composting, purchasing recycling equipment, trucks, cans, et cetera, purchasing leaf machines. This grant has been used in the past for the leaf truck and leaf machines, and we do have a leaf machine scheduled for replacement in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. We could consider applying for those two machines in lieu of budgeting for them. The grant would cover ninety percent of the cost.
Yeah, so that's one I, I think we really need to consider applying for the leaf machines. We've gotten them there before and with the, with the insurance cost like we talked about before, this could be a really good budget, you know, alleviation for us. So I know there are other, other options that could be exciting and considered, but I think this year we definitely should move towards the leaf machine.
I don't think we need to make a decision until October.
Sometimes it's helpful to Dave if we tell him what we're doing, yeah, is that the case here?
If, if that's where the board is leaning, although I would probably wait until October to actually pass the resolution, maybe we'll have the EAC discuss it, whatever. You know, gives us a little more time to be flexible. We need to change something or add another machine, doesn't matter.
Well, I think you said, it sounds like we have consensus. And I am unfortunately leaving to drive to Boston, so Matt will be taking over.
Safe travels, Kate, safe travels. All right, next up is my report, the Parks and Open Space Committee report. Just one item on my agenda, it's informational. This is at Ghulie Park, the installation of the playground at Ghulie Park is underway, and the work should be completed within the next month or so, weather permitting. And then next up is a Public Safety Committee report with Commissioner Knapp. I'm happy to take the first item because I was kind of involved in it this week.
I, yeah, I was going to draw some paint out first, but I'll let you take.
Yeah. So unfortunately, the lovely new guard rail along East Possum Hollow Road was damaged significantly this week. It was a hit and run. It was later determined that it was a Wallingford Swarthmore school bus driver. I'm not going to elaborate beyond that, but unfortunately, the the guard rail is very damaged. Thirty forty plus feet is going to have to be replaced. That's expensive. Go ahead.
Don't we have some excess sitting around?
We do, we do. And in this case, you know, the school district's carrier will be picking this up. You know, my concern is it's going to happen again, and if there's another hit and run, is it going to be claim after claim after claim that the township incurs? So one idea I had, I'm open to suggestion, other ideas, I'm not married to it, this idea is to put a camera on a pole to try to catch a hit and run person when this happens again. You know, just kind of fell into the department's lap that they found out it was a school bus driver. So we could have been really stuck with nothing to go on. Just, just something to think about. I asked chief to get some numbers to see, you know, what it would cost and maybe if it's even possible to put a camera there. I, there are cameras, I believe, on the Wallingford train station, but I don't, they don't go far enough up to. There's their utility poles along the embankment, so you just have it facing down, wouldn't be at anyone's house, just facing down. I know Marty hates it. But if you got another idea, I'm all ears.
I guess I have a, some follow up. Well, I have one follow up comment and some follow up questions. To, to Micah's point, we do have guard rail. I think there was consideration to using it because we are looking to replace the guardrail along Avondale. So I think there was consideration to repurpose it for that specific area. As far as this specific incident, given that it was a school driver, a, you know, a school bus driver, and my understanding is they're relatively new to the position, how much do we think this is a one off because there is an inexperienced school bus driver? And how much do we think that this is going to be a recurring issue?
Don't know. Wait till plow season.
Right.
And we have trash trucks two days a week, five different companies. Plus recycling third day.
And I guess a follow up question more directed at Chief Splain, if the camera is in elevated position facing straight down, how helpful is that for identifying people? I don't imagine you could see a driver's license, not driver's license, so. License plate from that.
I have to do a little more research down there as far as the positioning of the camera to capture as much of the roadway as we possibly can. I know there's some trees overhanging and to answer your question directly, but straight down is going to provide absolutely no assistance to us in identifying. But if it's at an angle where you can see up the street or down the street, it would be helpful.
So I guess the follow up question, if it's not straight down, if it's like on one end of the street facing up or the other way facing back, what kind of ability do you have? Because there's a number of front yards there to protect the resident's privacy in that area.
The ability to protect their privacy would be very good, and we just show portions of the street. So I'll give you an example in Sapets Park, when we put the cameras up, those houses weren't there. The houses were built, we moved the cameras. So a way to protect their privacy.
Sure.
If we set the camera up and it could get a straight line view of the car, if your car and team department actually did it, we can see it.
True.
I like that leading cross exam.
I like how you finished. Of course. She's being a detective again.
I, I, I appreciate Matt, like, just, there's a problem, come with a solution and, and, and we're able to discuss it. My, my view on cameras and the township is very well known. I, I just, I cannot stand the idea of cameras looking at at us all the time. However, I do real, I want to be honest, I really do appreciate the fact that you're like, hey, here's an idea, what else you got? I don't have another idea.
And I've been getting a lot of grief about the guard rail, and people didn't like it to begin with, and now it's sitting there and it looks bad and it's across from people's houses.
Sure.
Can't speak.
Also something we do on Possum Hollow.
West Possum Hollow exit ramp.
What I do, what I do, I mean, with some of the ideas that Mike had brought up, though, of like bigger vehicles like a bus or the plows and things like that, the plows, the trash trucks, like, I mean, I think some of this is, there is an expectation that this will get hit again.
Right.
If it's certainly one of ours, then that's on us anyway, no matter what we have. So you know, I I'm, for me, I understand that there might be some frustration around not liking the way that it looks. I think safety is probably the best thing at that point, but I wouldn't want to continue to add to those then cameras and then all the other.
I will. I'll take us away from this one because it's somewhat moot. I mean, it's, it's not right. But I have feelings and thoughts, where Marty and I have feelings and thoughts together on Thursday nights. About cameras, but boy. And I empathize. Thank you. I, I agree. Matt, thanks for coming up with an idea. It's tough one. I, I know the grief you're getting for that, that we didn't, and again, for everybody, for people out there watching. That was a state requirement, Penn Dot, not ours, and a net benefit of having sidewalk, so we can figure something out.
I have a process question about the replacing of it. I understand it's probably an administrative burden, takes some time, phone calls, emails, that kind of thing. Is there any cost if it gets hit? You know, multiple times a year and insurance is going to cover it. Are premiums going to go up? Like, what's the financial hit if we're not able to identify who's hitting this?
Yeah, in, in addition to the deductible that we'll have to pay on it, our experience modification factor goes up, and when that factor goes up, that means that our, our rates will go up. Okay.
Yeah, my concern wasn't with a scratch or a ding, it was with, it's, it's destroyed.
Yeah.
So that, that, and just.
Tight, it's going to happen.
Yeah, and we don't, we can, we can talk about this down the road.
We'll look into it. I say we look into it, and then another idea, maybe just let's see how far we go until we have another one, and then we have some solutions.
Well, right now, well, we have to fix it right now because.
Right.
Right, but yes, you're.
Yeah.
Correct.
Make it, make it one way again. I love that. So happy.
We're not going to do that because I had people asking me, they thought we're not doing that.
It's going to stay. Oh, geez. You could put marijuana stores down there and just shut the plastic bags multiple kinds. Yeah, man. All right. Thanks for that addition. Second agenda, and this deserves a round of applause, the drop program for the police. So we're wrapped up, and we have to authorize advertisement of the ordinance. Both the police and the township have agreed to the pension retirement for the police plan. And ordinance will need to be adopted to reflect the changes. So we're going to move to authorize this. Bob, we at Labor Solicitor have the, we've got the the drop plan and ordinance all agreed upon and wonderful. Yeah.
Yeah, we've been working with our labor counsel on that. He believe, he's, he's heard from the police attorney that they appear to be in agreement. They, I guess, have a meeting with the union where they're going to confirm that everyone is in agreement with it. I think in the interest of moving this along, we can advertise.
That was my only question, if, if we advertise it and there's non, well, I don't know what would be non material, but if there's changes to it. Is it? Okay.
Because it doesn't matter if they add some provisions with economic impact, you'd have to readvertise.
Couple bucks to advertise it, let's, let's be hopeful. And move it. So I will move for the board to authorize the advertisement of the drop ordinance for the police pension plan. Did I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes six zero. Last item on. Uh, last item, uh, on, uh, my agenda was a late addition last night. It is, uh, the fireworks regulations, it's been a change in state law. Uh, I've been hearing about this one from my sister in law for five months, uh, specifically because of her dogs. My dog also hates them and will flee. You should have in your packets, uh, memorandum from, uh, the solicitor's office. Let me pull it up real quick. And, uh. Uh, our gratitude for, to Carl for drafting this up. Um, and so basically, if you, to, to restate it. And I think there's any action to be done today, other than to look into something, seeing if we have some initial conversations. Uh, there's the possibility that, I'm not sure from reading this, and I haven't read the, uh, the legislation. Uh, to completely ban fireworks if you, the municipality, within that municipality, you can't. Uh, abide by the, uh, distance requirements. Not sure if that would apply here, and I'm sure we can't, like, carve up zoning districts.
Our understanding, it has to be municipal wide, that there is. Yeah, exactly, and I fear there probably are a few multi acre properties in town that would.
And you want to talk about, right, insurance costs. Inviting a lawsuit from, uh. You know, one person and us being out of line with a completely new piece of legislation that has no precedent, uh, or court cases. But there are some other advantages, or at least some, uh, additional flexibility in this, uh, recent. Uh, legislation, including, uh, setting restrictions on. Uh, in addition to the existing restrictions that are within a hundred and fifty feet of an occupied building, that sort of thing. Uh, there are restrictions, uh, as to time when fireworks can be set off, ten o'clock. Uh, most nights, except for some, uh, some holidays, such as July fourth. And, uh. And there's, right, there's some permit provisions, I, my thought is. Uh, Bob, and you can maybe get, uh, your feedback, my thought is it's something that we. That you and Carl can look into potentially draft some, uh, some, uh. Some modifications to our code, revise that ordinance consistent with what's there, I'm sure that.
Yep.
You've got, uh, Swarthmore and media and, uh, other municipalities that are doing the same thing. And that, you, you know, we, we could probably, provided there's an appetite on board, and I imagine that there is. That we could safely draft some restrictions, modify, or create an ordinance, which. By the way, we, it looks like from Carl's memo, we actually have to affirmatively enact. Uh, or these restrictions don't magically follow us from the state, uh, legislation, it's just a. Uh, an opportunity and invitation for municipalities, a brand of more authority to us to. Implement certain restrictions within, uh, the boundaries of, uh, the state law. Uh, so. With that, I'd say, I mean, I assume even just a knot of heads, that we all want, uh, Bob, our solicitor to, to look into this and. And see where it evolves elsewhere and, uh, and maybe draft up a, uh. A draft ordinance locally that, that does what, it seems like this is pretty limited, so, you know, maybe a maximalist. Uh, ordinance, and then we can debate it and carve it back from there and see what other municipalities are doing. Does that sound like a decent approach?
Definitely, I know this is an area where I get many complaints every summer from my residents, so I'm very curious to see what we can do about it.
It does disguise the gun shop.
It's also good for, you know, it to think about people with PTSD as well as dogs and young children.
Um, I will acknowledge that I, that first year I've been in that chair, uh, and I apologize to my neighbors in the third ward right now. But sheep don't like it, the dog hates it, uh, uh, and it really is a nuisance, so. That's approach we'll take. Solicitor will get back to us in the next couple of months, uh, dress something up with a maximalist approach, we can discuss it, carve it back. Uh, we'll just keep ourselves safe, uh, in terms of, uh, litigation that we will lose and pay for, but see what we can get. And with that, uh, Commissioner Garson, Vice President Garson, I, uh, complete my report.
Thank you, I'll pass it over to Commissioner O'Connor now for the infrastructure and public works committee.
Thank you, Vice President Garson, and, uh, good evening again, I have two quick items, the second one, uh, Matt, if it's okay with you, I'm going to punt over to you. So before we get to that, the first item on my agenda, uh, this evening is the county model, uh, stormwater ordinance, uh. This ordinance was, uh, prepared by the county planning department, and both, uh, Charles and Bob both offered their, uh, suggestions. Township is required to adopt the updated ordinance before the thirtieth of September, so with that said, uh, we have a copy of the, uh, most recent ordinance. Uh, does anyone have any, well, actually, I guess I'll just make a motion, um, I would move that we adopt the, uh. Or that we, uh, move to adopt the, uh, stormwater management ordinance, um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, um, is there any comments, question or discussion? And hearing none, um, all in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, it looks like the motion carries unanimously six to zero, thank you so much, and, um. I'll pass the next item along to, uh, Vice President Garson, if that's okay, thanks again, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor, um, so, stormwater, I mean, it's something that I think every commissioner's heard about, um, in their time up here on the board. Um, so I'm, want to speak tonight about Henry Lane, um, this is something really, since the beginning, I've been on the board, I've heard from residents on Henry Lane. Um, there is no stormwater infrastructure on that street for whatever reason. Um, they've really been inundated over the years with stormwater. Um, it's not only coming down from, um, Osborne, which is the intersecting street and running down Henry towards, um, Calendar. It's also coming down Palmer's and then working its way through the backyards on Henry Lane, so, um, they're getting hit pretty bad. Um, in July, uh, myself and Manager Grady and, um, Engineer Catania, we had two meetings with residents on Henry Lane. And they walked us through and showed us the problems, and, you know, if they're looking for relief, and, and I think part of relief. For potentially getting there is coming up with a plan. Um, I do have some photos and video that a resident on Henry Lane shared with me, um. Uh, yesterday that I brought with me tonight, and that's from the heavy rain we had earlier this week. Um, I could play it off my laptop or I could have it on my last drive.
I just sent you a link to the, gave your email of.
Now I have to do something technical.
What's that?
Oh, I, you're putting me on Zoom here?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna have him join in that way, share his screen. Trying to come up with some.
Dave, you are a technical wizard. Yes, I'll join with the computer. So let me see, let me queue this up right there.
Make sure I share something that's appropriate. Um, it's coming up on mine. I think I did, mine's ready. Oh, cool, so if I hit play. Okay, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna play the entire five and a half minutes of this, but you can see this is a resident driving down Henry Lane. And there's, there's an extensive amount of stormwater on, on the right here, and, um, as I guess this is approaching kind of the midway of Henry Lane. It's going across the street and down, um, the residence yards on, on the left.
Looks like there's a decent amount of ponding in the front yard.
Yeah, I mean, and this is, this was a heavy storm, but you have to remember, we hadn't had any significant rain for a month. They have no, they have no stormwater infrastructure on that street.
And some of the neighboring streets in the same direction, which are very similarly organized, do.
I'm gonna pause it right here, sorry, um. They have a ton of storm drains over there, we don't, don't know why. And that's one of the questions, I, Matt, why are there, I'll call it eight drains on Marlin and zero on Henry, and I. My, my guess is that, um, those drains were put in before a lot of the stormwater ordinances when those neighborhoods were constructed. You know, now if you do it like, like, um, the development in South Media, we made them do a lot of stormwater because our ordinances have evolved. This is water coming, this is water that's worked its way down Palmer's into the rear of the Henry Lane yards, and it's coming across the residence yard and across the street.
Well, I, I will say, um, Dave, um, and Charles and myself had an extensive kind of walk and talk. Along Palmer's Briarwood, uh, kind of through Palmer, uh, Palmer's up into. Like the backyard of the, the middle school area, looking at flood mitigation potential, uh, in that area. And we, we kind of had some discussions with the ARPA funds about how to distribute that money there. So I'm curious if we make improvements in, like, the adjacent neighborhood, would we expect any decreased flooding? For the Henry Lane people, or are they really like separate systems that would need to be addressed separately?
Really, really a separate system. So, so what I'd like to do tonight, if the board will do it, um. Is, um, have, uh, Mr. Catania just come up with some options for Henry Lane, because right now, you know, we don't know what we can do. Um, and, you know, this may, this would involve potentially on the installation of drains. Um, there's a large empty parcel on Palmer's Lane, and we're trying to see if maybe that would be an area that could absorb some stormwater. There's, um, in privately loaned, owned, I believe it's privately owned, because if it was ours, we'd mow it and maintain it. Empty space on Henry Lane, that might be an area where perhaps some stormwater infrastructure, um, could go. Aqua is beginning a project this week on Palmer's and Osborne, so eventually we'll have to repave those roads. Um, perhaps with some grading, that would also be part of controlling stormwater, I think. You know, ideally, the residents still want to see trains there, um, but for now, I'd like for Charles to come up with some options. Board can consider, um, we can go to the residents with them, they could say, we like this, we like that, we hate this, we hate that, and then try to get some numbers. Around this, um, to make some intelligent decisions, because right now, we don't even know what, um, things.
Can I preemptively tell you residents that they moved into a swamp suburb? With nineteen fifty's infrastructure, out of dense cities that, uh, have. The existing stormwater infrastructure, they plant grass and trees. Uh, with very few trees, they cut that grass every week. Uh, and then they complain that it floods, so, uh, I'm for all that, but I'm also saying. Because this comes up all the time, and I really feel like Moyland, where there's no infrastructure at all, it's all septic, but. That's what you get when you move to the suburbs, and I understand that too, um.
And I think, I think they're looking for something comprehensive, and I think that, you know, we've talked about rain guard, we could maybe creating the road in a drain.
Double our taxes for five years and just triple them.
Yeah, they're not high enough. I, I will say this area directly abuts like this, you know, Henry is right at the southern tip of Ward two, where, uh, Commissioner Garson. Uh, you know, uh, represents, and, uh, the northern part of Ward one, uh, has the same issue. And, you know, we've shared videos of people's homes flooding, there is unique geology, uh, in this area, the ground. Uh, can just absorb far less liquid than other suburbs, uh, you know, I had. To do some stormwater mitigation issues in my backyard, and there's something called a perk test. And it's, you know, essentially a scale from zero on up, and, you know, the geology there is such that it's pure clay and it's like zero. It absorbs exactly zero, uh, water, everything just, uh, you know, skates over the surface and, uh, destroys people's homes.
But I, I, I do really like Matt, the idea, so I, I would.
Yeah.
Very much support the options and as comprehensive as we, as we can. And as a side note, kind of related, Micah, you're not far off, I think it, it's worth us. There's a lot of things coming out around lawns, the damage that lawns do. And taking a look at what our, what our ordinances are around lawns, because if we allowed for a little bit more wild growth. And native plants, et cetera, there could be some very positive effects across the township, as a separate issue, but I think.
And impervious driveways, impervious roads, it's, uh, right, and the clay dug, dug with fencing, but not. Incorrect sides, digging through that clay is a pain, is a, is a royal pain, but again, it's, it's like the. That the, right, the.
Yeah.
Oh my God, my backyard, when you have a grass, no trees, and impervious driveways.
And, and, you know, ultimately, I'd like to be able, as I said, the board tapped some numbers to some options, because I think over the years, I've kind of, well, you know. We've been told this is expensive, well, what does that mean, Matt, and I just, I don't know. So I, I think, I think, you know, they're my constituents, our residents, they deserve, um, some, some responses and.
I was gonna say Matt too, I've, I've seen videos up here, I've, I've seen videos up here way worse than that from that street, I went to. I, I think Cindy Santa Maria, who I think Chief knows, yeah, Chief knows, um, she lives back there, and I've known her, you know, for years, and I know that. And I, I, I think it's a great idea.
They sent me, um, video probably a year ago where, uh, you know, with, with a, a real river.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, so, in the interest of moving things along, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize, uh, Mr. Catania to come up. With some options to address the stormwater on Henry Lane.
Second. I would actually, uh, ask that we modify that, since we're already discussing, uh, addressing stormwater in Briarwood, Palmer's. And kind of, uh, how that affects that entire drainage, like valley, we'll say, let's kind of look at that entire neighborhood, kind of more comprehensively, rather than just that one street. I would ask that we look at kind of plans, everything north of East Rose Valley, south of Capples, you know, the areas that we've walked, I think they're all probably gonna. Play into each other.
I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that, I just want to make sure that, um, when we do it, you know, we have options for looking at the installation of drains on Henry. And perhaps on the other streets you just mentioned.
Absolutely.
Exactly, I, I, I don't want to go to, I mean, we.
Yeah.
Entire township.
Right.
So I, I, as long, I agree with Max, I think that's fine, but, uh, Charles already said that it's a separate system. So I want to make sure that at least this issue is addressed in whatever we look at, and then if we want to have. There's nothing wrong with that, there might be connections that can seize our ideas that can be on. So should I amend that version to include the streets that, uh. Max added, or I think so.
It'll, it'll still be a line item, I imagine, for the specific Henry Lane issues, but it's the area, the neighborhood that flanks Briarwood and Palmer's. North of East Rose Valley. And then there is, I believe, some planned flood mitigation, kind of, uh, north as it goes to Smithfield and East Country Cove Lane, moving into Capples.
I, well. I mean, I think, I think you just said an area that was focused on Henry Lane, between Capples and Osborne. And so that little grid right in there that would have Berry, Maryland, Henry, Markham, Calendar, Osborne, Palmer's. I mean, it's just like a nice little contained area, Matt, let's Charles decide what makes the most sense, giving some space.
It visibly, is there any place where we can divert to swales, I, I, because I think I'm gonna vote against this, and since we're not gonna comment, I'll just say. I hate, I love giving Charles work, it just feels to me like an exercise where we're showing busywork and. Spending some of our time and Charles' time and money, when we're just gonna come back and not be able to do anything, but we'll be able to tell the residents. And I get it, because I had this.
I mean, I think in this case, some of that.
Yeah, where you, but you're, you're gonna, you're not gonna do it in one area where there are others that are just equally terrible.
The, the options might not, so I said drains, but it also could be swelled, that's why I said options, so we can, again, we don't know what we can do there. Like I said, there's some vacant property there that might be able to have a natural way to store stormwater, I don't know.
Behind Palmer's, there is, right, that work behind Palmer's.
So a, all I'm asking tonight is just to have Charles look into it, so I can give something intelligent back.
Sure, I'm fine with that, you can isolate it to Henry, I know Charles had some line items for various projects in the kind of Palmer's Briarwood area that we already penciled into the ARPA. Fund, you know, meeting months ago. So sure, let's get some kind of penciled in numbers for some options along Henry.
Let's just keep it with Henry, uh, for now. You're channeling me. I appreciate that. So I, I would say no need to amend your.
Right.
Your motion. Let's take a look at what we've got. And again, there might be some very creative things that could benefit. So all those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Five, five, one? All right. All right, next up is the manager's report with manager Grady.
All right, thank you, Vice President Carson. First bit of information, the. Hotline for suicide prevention and crisis support nine eight eight is officially underway. That's something that became effective in July. It can be used by anyone at any time at no, no cost to train crisis response. Professionals can help support individuals considering suicide, self harm, or any behavioral or mental health need for themselves. Lifeline services are open twenty four hours a day, seven days a week at no cost to the caller. Delaware County is hosting a household hazardous waste event. On this Saturday, September 10th, at the Delaware County Emergency Training Center in Sharon Hill. Please check the website as it does fill up quickly. It may actually have already filled up. But please check it out. There is information on the Solid Waste Authority website about what items can and cannot be brought. To the household hazardous waste events and there, there will be another one later in the fall as well. The Delaware County Emergency Rental Assistance Program will be closing this Saturday at four P M. The program is approaching 100% of its expenditure of the allocation for the funds. So if you think this is something that would benefit you or someone you know. Please make sure that you register before four P M on Saturday, at which point it will be closing. Information is at delco-era.com. The bivalent, am I saying that correctly, Dr. Cooper? Covid nineteen has been approved by the FDA. The Delaware County. Health Department has made this announcement that it is safe for individuals. It will, it is currently not yet available through the Health Department, but they are expected to be available at Delaware County Covid nineteen. Vaccination clinic soon. The booster shots are currently available in select pharmacies in Delaware County. You can check the federal website at www.vaccines.gov. The most up to date appointment availability. Dr. Cooper, do you have anything to add?
I do. Thank you, Dave. I've been fielding a lot of questions for this in my emergency clinic. People are asking when they can get what's been commonly known as the Omicron booster and I've been calling around several pharmacies. The pharmacies should be able to schedule these now. I have scheduled my personal Omicron booster for Tuesday. And so I strongly encourage everyone who's eligible to get this, which to my understanding is everyone to get it. It's essentially kind of moving forward. I think we're gonna start seeing yearly flu vaccines that are offered, yearly Covid vaccines based on the, you know, predominant strains that are offered. And I encourage all of you to protect yourselves to the best of your ability.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. September is the National Emergency Preparedness Month. This is through ready.gov. There's plenty of information at ready.gov. They're encouraging people, families to keep in mind having preparation plans for natural disasters. For things that may happen in your household, having kits ready to go. Check out ready.gov. There's a lot of information there and resources for anybody preparing for, for disasters. Disasters can strike anywhere at any time, so be prepared. The Bearroot Tree Program is open. Our Shade Tree Commission has been reviewing. The program and is planning to make recommendations for applying for the program. We have applied for the last several programs and I imagine we'll continue to do that again. Will also the Shade Tree Commission should hopefully make some recommendations, what locations where these trees can be planned. Planted. And lastly, the Family Fun Day, the Annual Family Fun Day has been scheduled for. Saturday, October 15th from 12 to three P M. This will be at the Strathaven Middle School as in past years. Lots of activities and food, including petting zoo, bouncy castles, G2D free games and much more. Unfortunately, Zach's hamburgers is not around this year, but we did, we were able to secure Pancharos. They'll be coming, also be other food and treats. So if you're available on October 15th, please come out to the. Another Providence Family Fun Day at the Strathaven Middle School parking lot. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Manager Grady. The board's next meeting is on September 22nd. That's it. Good night.